Order and have a roll call, please.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Elliott? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Ballard? Mr. Oh, sorry, Mr. Ballard, I just muted you again.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Sneed, that is five.
Okay, thank you. So we'll need a motion for the approval of the executive meeting of May twenty-third minutes.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I got an emotion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing. Saint Louis, the commissioner's status sheets, we do not have any committee reports, none. And new business, none. So we can proceed to the old business of items that are ready for action. PC eleven twenty-two, five-five-five-seven-five-seven LLC. I believe that's Paul.
Should unmute myself there, sorry about that. Good evening, commissioners, before you is PC eleven dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC. As you will recall, this is a request for amended C eight plant commercial district for a one point six eight acre tract on the south side of Lindbergh Boulevard, west of Five Oaks Parkway. And we can see from the the context map in the aerial, this parcel is located in South County and on the the south side of Telegraph. This this view provides some more context of the surrounding land use, the commercial uses of budding Telegraph, and then there is some single-family residential to the south. As you'll recall, the the preliminary site plan presented by the petitioner at public hearing really shows minimal site improvements. They're adding one new parking space towards the front of the building and then a new fence around the trash enclosure. And they're maintaining the existing access to Lindbergh and the cross-access parking agreements with the the adjoining parcel. Additionally, there is a detention basin in the sort of southwest corner of the site. And commissioners had expressed some concern at the previous meeting as to what the petitioner was proposing to sort of remediate this the site. And the petitioner responded, they sent a letter which you've received and sort of detailing the condition of the the site. It was designed to be a dry detention basin. And so then there is a a blockage in the outlet pipe that they're proposing to remove. And they're going to remove all the cattails as well, and they stated they would plant grass in the basin for the original approved design. And so it would function, you know, with these improvements, it would function again as a dry detention basin, and there wouldn't be standing water anymore. And so the staff continues to to recommend approval for this petition. Commercial uses continue to be appropriate at the site. The C eight planned district procedure, it continues to be appropriate as well. And the office and medical office, the addition of medical office proposed can be operated in such a way as to not be detrimental to the surrounding land uses. And we are recommending some site-specific conditions of development, including architectural review with equal treatment of all sides. And the monument sign matching architectural style of the building, enhancing landscape requirements, and providing a pedestrian access to the site from the sidewalk along Lindbergh. So at this time, I would ask for a motion for approval.
A motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval. Second.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Five, nothing. We'll move on to PC sixteen dash twenty-two Kimberly George.
Yeah, before you is PC sixteen twenty-two Kimberly George, which is a request for a conditional use permit in the R two residence district for a zero point seven four acre tract on the north side of Parker Road, approximately one hundred and fifty feet west of Belle Fountain Road. As you'll recall, from the previous meeting and from public hearing, this site is located in North County. And you can see it outlined in red along Parker Road there. And this just provides some some further context of the the surrounding area. I would point out that directly south on the the south side of Parker Road is Bell Park Plaza, which is the the majority of the area sort of encompassed by the Spanish Lake Town Center Land Use Master Plan that your the commission approved and was ultimately adopted by county council last at the beginning of this year. So the preliminary site development plan presented by the petitioner at public hearing and shows five parking spaces as well as a pickup drop-off area, which is kind of where the blue circle is. There is a gravel driveway there existing and then an outdoor play area, an existing outdoor play area. And that's sort of outlined by the green square. Now, the department is recommending revisions to the site plan, removing the the gravel as it's not permitted in the R two residence district. So that area would need to be paved. Additionally, it's not shown on the plan, but it was shown on the aerial. There's some pavement in front of the the eastern structure that would need to be removed. And then in lieu of a landscape buffer yard, we are recommending residential-style foundation plantings around the structure that will be the the childcare facility. So at the the previous meeting, the the commission voted to hold this petition. And I believe Commissioner Cunningham was not present and, you know, you wanted him to be there for for the vote, but also to to hear the staff recommendation. And there was also a concern from the commission surrounding traffic or an increase in traffic. After the meeting, the petitioner reached out to the planning department, addressing those concerns, and they Can you hear me, Commissioner Cunningham?
Hello?
Can everybody hear me? Should I continue?
I can hear you, Paul.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody ask if I was muted, so.
No, I don't know if Lou can hear.
Yeah, I can. I for a minute there, it kind of went, it went silent.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. And the the petitioner stated that there haven't been any accidents or any traffic-related issues since they moved into the the location to operate a home daycare in twenty sixteen. Additionally, they said that they have signs that they place out to warn drivers to to look out for children and sort of be aware that kids are going to be dropped off. The department finds that the increase in number of children is is minimal and will not significantly significantly increase traffic at the site.
Thank you, Paul.
So we are continuing to recommend approval of this petition. The proposed use is compatible with with the surrounding land use and development planner pattern. And it is, while it's not within the Spanish Lake Town Center Land Use Master Plan, it it does align with the the land use recommendations in that plan. And it, the petition meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance for granting a conditional use permit. It's consistent with good planning practice. It's not detrimental to permitted developments and uses in the district. It can be developed in a manner that is visually compatible with surrounding land uses. And it is essential and desirable to promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare of, you know, both St. Louis County and specifically Spanish Lake. We are recommending some conditions of development, which would include limiting the number of children to twenty-two. Residential-style foundation plantings, as discussed, in lieu of the landscape buffer yard, as well as any freestanding sign that would be proposed should be monument in style. So at this time, I would ask for a motion for approval.
Motions? Anyone?
I actually just have something for discussion, if I'm not speaking out of turn, Bill.
No, 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 go right ahead.
Okay, so after after her presentation, I was able to speak with the fire chief of Spanish Lake and ask if he was able to just go by and see the facility, you know, and see. Because in the meeting, I remember distinctly that she she said that she made a lot of changes and and preparing her daycare for, I guess, her proposal to carry more children. As it says here, like up to twenty-two, and I think she had like seven to ten at the moment, if I'm not mistaken. So at my request, the the chief did go over there and he had a conversation with her, just asking, you know, has she made her her updates and started any construction because he wasn't aware of any of the, you know, any plans or drawings or of any kind. And she said, oh, no, I I hadn't made any changes. I haven't started any construction at all to the daycare. I wouldn't, I didn't do that because it wasn't approved yet by the by the St. Louis County Planning and Zoning Commission. And he said, oh, he said, going by our my conversation with him, he told me that she went on, you know, he basically said that they were under the impression that you already made these changes. You know, and she said, no, I I haven't started any construction at all. So and he said, oh, okay, well, that's fine. And he did say that her facility looked nice. It was clean and and everything looked fine. However, I'm I'm pretty certain that she did tell us that she made changes as far as construction to house up to twenty-two children. And she said that the state, I believe, approved either her her plans or whatever changes she had made. So if if I could, just, I'd like to know if there was a statement. I don't want to just go basically on my memory, but the record. Does it? Does it say that she said she made those changes or anything like that, or did construction?
If I could, when I last spoke with her, she had told me that she was starting work on the driveway, removing the gravel and paving the gravel portion of the driveway. But until she has the CUP, I'm not sure she'd be able to pull permits for the interior sort of work. Paul, if you remember differently, please chime in. I I think she did submit some of this work to the state since she needs, you know, state health and senior services. I think she needs some sort of pre-approval from them first. So I believe she submitted her plan, not for a permitting approval, but to the state for the childcare approval. Because they're sort of the state process she has to go through and this county, the conditional use permit process she's going through. So I think she has started some of it, but she's not submitted anything to St. Louis County yet for permitting. And she really can't until she gets the CUP. Because when they see it up there, as far as they know, the only thing that's permitted is is a single-family home.
Right, and just to add to that, my, you know, to my recollection or my understanding of that discussion at at public hearing was changes that have been made to that single-family structure to accommodate the existing home daycare. And then there was that discussion about, you know, state, the the state of Missouri giving sort of approval of the site, you know, saying that it it could be transitioned into a childcare facility to house, you know, more children up to to twenty-two. These are the types of changes that would need to be made. I believe it was, you know, more restrooms, you know, things of that nature. My understanding is none of that work has been done. And, you know, as Mel was saying, they wouldn't, you know, she wouldn't be able to pull a permit for any interior work until a site plan has been approved.
Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we go back like Lou's site and get the information? It's recorded, right? We can go back and listen and see what we were told. And then I'd like to clarify myself here. The traffic wasn't an issue. I just shared with you guys the experience I had when making that right turn at that on Belle, Belle Fountain Road, I believe it is. And a guy come in, almost wiped me out and almost ended up in that driveway. But that wasn't the driving issue. The driving issue is what we thought we heard that Lou just got to explaining. So can we pull the record and see what we actually heard?
Yeah, I think you'd have to make a motion for a hold so that that can be done.
So if I if I may, Commissioners Sneed, I would, my recommendation would be to to move this forward as an information report, and planning staff can go back between now and before we bring it back to you as a letter of recommendation. We will, you know, watch the meeting, figure out exactly what was said, rather than holding it and and still requiring two more meetings to move this this petition forward. If that makes sense.
That's up to the commissioners, I guess, if they want to approve it and then go back and try and unapprove it or reverse of that, or to put it on hold and get the information. It's
Right, it can go either way.
I I just I basically would just, would like to just, I definitely don't want to hold up any process. The the main thing is just to get clarity. That's it. I wanted to make sure that it was, it was or was not what I what I thought I heard. I was under the impression that she told us all that work was done, and it may, it's possible that I misunderstood. But that's what I was, that's what I thought leaving that meeting. And then, you know, just to find out that she hadn't done anything, it just kind of threw me a little bit. So if we do make a motion to
If you want to make a motion for approval, and then we'll ask staff to research that for us and get back to you on it.
I'm fine. I'm fine.
You want to make a motion?
Are you, Bill?
Bill, if you're okay with it, I'm fine. Like I said, the only thing I had, I was just sharing the little experience I had, so I'm okay.
Okay.
This is Keith. If the staff's going to do that, could the staff check with the St. Louis County Police just to ask if there's been any accidents other than a minor fender bender there?
Sure, and I would say I have, I have reached out to the police department and I haven't gotten a response. That's that's the only reason I didn't mention it. Because I didn't have anything to tell you from them, so.
Oh, so they had, they had nothing, because I mean, I know
They just haven't responded to my request yet.
If if somebody got hurt, then they'll have a record of it. If not, they don't have a record. Okay.
So I'll I'll follow up with the police department.
Thank you.
And you know, people are driving crazy these days, so that don't mean nothing, what happened, that happens all the time.
The motion is for approval. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Well.
Okay, so we will reach out to the petitioner to get a clearer timeline and and sort of scope.
Very good. Thanks, and Paul. Okay, so we got some letters for approval. We'll take those one at a time.
Okay, so, I apologize, Mr. Sneed.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, first we have PC oh four twenty-two Verizon Wireless. This is a request for a CUP in the NU down off Antire Road by the county line. We do have a letter for approval consistent with the commission's actions from the the first May executive meeting.
Okay, so if someone want to make a motion for approval of the letter?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Second?
I'll second. I mean, does it make a difference?
Not to us.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, five, nothing.
Then next we have PC fourteen twenty-two Qua Paul Whispering Pines. This was a request for an amended C eight on the north side of Olive. This is to add medical offices as a permitted use in this existing C eight. This is also a letter consistent with the commission's actions from the May twenty-third executive meeting.
So have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing. Thank you. Uh, I guess we'll go to correspondence. Let's see. Nine A. Do you want to say something about that, Mel?
Um, I think Abby was going to briefly overview it.
Yeah, I'll go over it. So PC thirty-six dash twenty-one Moto Inc. is coming before you again as a response to the council order from April twenty-sixth, referring the petition back to the planning commission for further consideration. As you recall, this site is in South County, just west of the Jefferson Barracks Bridge to Illinois. The petition timeline is here for your reference. And and you'll recall that a motion to hold the petition passed at the previous executive meeting on May twenty-third. The county council outlined the following concerns regarding this petition. They found that the proposal is not appropriate at this location. The proposal is inconsistent with the sixth county council district community area study. It is not aesthetically or visually appealing. The site development plan is incompatible due to the location of the entrance in the floodplain setback. And the range of M one permitted and conditional uses is incompatible on a site with no road frontage access through a high-intensity development. Thus, the department has prepared a response to the order recommending denial. And at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
Is there a motion?
Bill, what are we, what are we looking for? Didn't we just talk about this at the last meeting and we wanted to go ahead and send it back as an approval? There was no denial.
There, there was no denial. And I know our our real leader, Wayne, is is has been working with Jacob to understand the contents of that letter and is hopeful to put together the reasons why this commission approved it. And we would prefer that those reasons be communicated to the
Back to the council.
Council, back to the council. And I know that he's been working with Jacob.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't that one time the county councilman handling that area was in favor of this? And then he came back not in favor of it?
Gary, that may be true. I I don't really know that myself, but that I know that now he may not be in favor of it. But I think this commission has very good reasons why we think that it is the right thing to do. And those ought to be articulated in our response because it supports our our vote.
Mr. Sneed, do you think we should hold this then? I think we should hold it until Wayne, because he's working with Jacob, we need to get all the information that he needs to make.
I I think that might be the best thing to do.
Okay, well, I'll motion for hold.
Second motion.
Okay, all those in favor of a hold?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? So it's five, nothing for a hold. Uh, nine B.
PC fifteen dash twenty-two John D. Johnson was a request for an amended C eight for a point nine two acre tract of land on the west side of LeMay Ferry Road, north of South Crest Way. And this is coming before you tonight as a request for a withdrawal without prejudice. As you recall, this site is in South County, and there you can see it outlined in red. Subsequent to the previous executive meeting, the petitioner indicated that the site development plan did not fully represent the petitioner's intention for the site and noted that the site development plan did not address a designated parking area for auto repairs, tire storage at the site, lighting, fencing, the entrance, the curb cuts from LeMay Ferry Road, some existing site and building improvements, or a landscaping plan. Therefore, the department is recommending approval of a withdrawal without prejudice and notes that for the proposal to move forward, the petitioner would need to submit a new application and a new public hearing would be held. So at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
You're you're requesting a motion for withdrawal? Withdrawal, that's, that's yeah, withdrawal. That's the motion for a withdrawal.
I'll second that.
I have Mr. Elliott as the first and Mr. Cunningham as the second.
Well, I I want, I want to make sure that
I think Mr. Elliott moved to approve the staff recommendation to approve the withdrawal.
Okay.
Without prejudice.
Okay.
Thank you.
With prejudice, correct.
Yeah. So take a we got a motion and a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Five, nothing. Okay. Okay, then we got nine C.
Good evening. PC one hundred eleven dash seventy Lynn Clay Development Corporation is asking for modifications to ordinance number five thousand eight hundred sixty-six as amended to allow for a gym within the Earth City Development located north of Interstate seventy, west of Earth City Expressway North. As you can see on your screens, it is, there's an aerial with the location outlined in red. The petitioner is requesting an ordinance amendment to add a gym to the permitted uses. Gyms and indoor recreation facilities are compatible with the office and industrial uses and developments throughout Earth City. One gym limited to three thousand square feet in gross floor area is in keeping with the land use and development pattern in the overall development. Thus, the staff recommends approval, and I'm going to ask for a motion of approval.
Do we have a motion?
I'll back to motion for approval.
And a second?
I can say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So it passes five to nothing. Okay, do we have a couple of site plans, do we?
We just have one in the end.
Okay. And which is that one?
Yes, we have the site development plan for PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one Insight Real Estate Investments LLC, which is the Tesla site on Lindbergh. They're they're reusing the existing building with some modification and adding additional parking on the south side of the lot for vehicle inventory. The landscape plan shows new landscaping along South Lindbergh and Bora Park Road and landscape islands within the parking lot. They're also showing the densely planted rear buffer yard and a fence designed with feedback from the residents. So it is closer to some of the residences to the south than others. And the existing trees on the east side of the southern property line are to remain. On their lighting plan, they're showing a zero-foot candle levels requirement twenty feet from the southern property line to provide additional screening from those Um, requirement twenty feet from the southern property line to provide additional screening from those residences. And here are the elevations they've submitted, which are consistent with what was shown at public hearing. As well as the site details for trash enclosure on the, um, southwest side of the building. And the, the monument sign proposal, they've, uh, elected to remove the existing sign. And replace it with their own eight foot tall sign. And lastly, they're showing the, um, electric vehicle charging stations that will be provided on the site. Um, so at this time, I'd like to request a, a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Um, make a motion for approval.
And a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Five. Okay. Oh. I guess we have something for the good of the order and someone's going to talk about the meeting schedule for the third quarter.
Yes, so up on your screen now is the meeting schedule, uh, for the next quarter. Um, we do have one more meeting in June, uh, but it's, it's not shown on here, so the next time the commission will meet will be Monday, June twenty-seventh. That would be a four o'clock meeting, um, but this is our schedule for the next quarter. Um, pretty much every other week until we get to Labor Day, we'll have an extra week gap, um, between August and September. The other item for the good of the order, I meant to do this at the very beginning, but you may have noticed a couple new faces up at the top of your screen. We have a new planner who started today, Peter Grine. He's, you know, having a long day, got in at nine. Could be here till nine, who knows with the public hearing. And then we also have a seasonal intern, Abby Medler, um, who you can, you know, if you can't see them at the top of your screen right now, you might need to click. Uh, the right button to get over to them, but those are our new, our newest members of the planning family. Um, so we thought we'd, you know, throw them right in here and do a, a nice, a planning commission meeting with you all.
Welcome.
Welcome.
But other than that, um, I don't have anything else. Like I said, it mentioned Jacob wasn't here tonight, but he'll be back, um, for the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we do have our public hearing at seven PM in about twenty-five minutes.
Okay, so we can have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those five to nothing.
All right, see you all in twenty-ish minutes.
See you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.